Hi, hello everyone and welcome to the July tenth Select Board meeting. Please join me in the left of the room. I present allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. So just as a reminder, this meeting is being recorded. It's being broadcast usually on Facebook Live and will also be available on ECAT's streaming live and available upon, upon demand. And I'd just like to ask each Select Board member to introduce themselves. First, we have Cora.
Jennifer Stacy.
Jamie Stevens.
Mark Lamb.
I'm Dottie Fulltenetti.
I'm Craig Barger.
And we have Connor Reed, our Town Administrator, and Elizabeth Heck, our Executive Assistant. So the first thing that we have on the agenda is a road closure request. The Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District is going to be having an end of summer music festival on Sunday, September seventeenth from eleven AM to three PM at Oakseam's Memorial Hall. They're requesting that the rockery section of Main Street from seventy-two Main Street, including the section of Barrow Street in front of Oakseam's Hall to the intersection of Oliver Street and Main be closed to traffic a half hour before and after the festival. That is on Sunday, September seventeenth from ten thirty AM to three thirty PM. Police, Fire, and DPW have been notified and have no concerns. The Shovel Town Cultural District Liaison, Amy Rodriguez, she was, is not able to be here tonight, but I am Chair of the Cultural District, so if anybody has any questions, they can ask me. And I believe this one... Did it say that there had to be a...
Police detail?
A police detail of two to three people. I don't see how this is...
That's correct.
Okay. Anybody have any comments or questions on this? So essentially, this is going to be like when the Lions Club closes down the, for the holiday festival. It'll be that same area. There's going to be several vans. There'll be food, there'll be art exhibits. There'll be, it's going to be a really fun afternoon. It's still in process, but it's going to be, it'll be big, bigger than the other events that we've done. So, anybody would like to make a motion to, to approve this road closure?
Shall move, Barger.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, a one-day liquor license. Again, the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District. End of summer, oh, that's what it is. The, the two to three police officers is for the liquor license. The end of summer music festival again. On behalf of the Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District, the Shovel Town Brewery is requesting a one-day beer and wine license for the end of summer music festival. Concert series at Oakseam's Memorial Hall on Barrow Street again, September seventeenth, ten AM to six PM. The Eastern Police have reviewed this event and recommend two to three detail officers. The event itself is going to be from eleven to three, but we, we did this a little bit earlier and a little bit later just in case as we get up, we have to adjust the time at all. So, any comments, questions? Can I get a motion?
Shall move, Barger. Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, again, the Shovel Town Brewery Summer Fest. Rear parking lot, fifty Oliver Street, July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three, eleven AM to ten PM. Frank has applied, Frank Altieri has applied for a one-day beer and wine license for the brewery Summer Fest to be held in the rear lot at fifty Oliver Street on Saturday, July twenty-ninth, from eleven AM to ten PM. An Eastern Police detail is not required for that. Any questions? Want to make a motion, Craig?
Move to approve the liquor license for the rear parking lot, fifty Oliver Street, July twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, from eleven AM to ten PM.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, Stone Hill College, Stronger Together Ride and Gather to Crush Cancer. Holy Cross Center, three twenty Washington Street, July thirtieth, ten AM to four PM. On behalf of the organization Stronger Together, Stone Hill College has applied for a one-day all-alcohol license for their Ride and Gather to Crush Cancer to be held in the Holy Cross Center on Sunday, July thirtieth, ten AM to four PM. Eastern Police do not require a detail. Any comments or questions?
I move to approve the Stone Hill College Stronger Together Ride and Gather to Crush Cancer on July thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three, from ten AM to four PM.
Second, Lamb.
Roger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Next, the Children's Museum in Easton. The Gala, also at Stone Hill College at the Petit Atrium, three twenty Washington Street, September twenty-third, from six PM to eleven PM. On behalf of the Children's Museum in Easton, Stone Hill College has applied for a one-day all-alcohol license for their Something Wild Gala to be held in the Petit Atrium on Saturday, September twenty-third, six PM to eleven PM. An Eastern Police detail is not required.
This is their annual gala, or is this the first one they've done?
I think this is the first one they've done. I don't recall it. And if people are interested, you know, it's obviously for a worthy cause. If you look at the, the Children's Museum website, I'm sure there'll be details on how to get tickets and join this event.
I move to approve the liquor license for Children's Museum Eastern Gala, Stone Hill College, September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-three, six PM to eleven PM.
Second, Lamb.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Great. All right, next we have Municipal Facilities Replacement. Police, Fire, DPW, schematic design phase update from project estimated construction budget, summer roadmap, and fall election calendar. Just so people at home know, they can look for these updates on www.easton MA.us/MBC as in Municipal Buildings Committee. And we have Walter Hartley and Greg Join. Greg, sorry, Walter is from PMA Associates and Greg is from Castle Boos Associates here to talk about the plans.
Sure, actually, I'm going to just hop in for a quick intro before the project team takes it over. So first, thank you, Dottie, and the board for having us tonight. We're happy to provide an update on the ongoing planning for a replacement of Police, Fire, and Public Works here in Easton. Moving to the next slide, please. We have a pretty packed agenda. I won't do it, ask you through quickly. But here's tonight's update, which is going to be covered in more detail by Walter Hartley, who's our project manager, and Greg Join, who is meeting on our design team. We have some important new information about projects to discuss tonight, particularly around the project budget and the mall outreach, outreach schedule and anticipation of town meetings and a special election in the October and November timeframe. And if anyone is tuning into the project for the first time, we wanted to make sure that we kick off tonight's presentation with a recap of where the project stands currently in the schematic design phase along with the process of how we have gotten where we are now. So Walter's going to start us off. And after that recap, we're going to get brought into the schematic design, cost estimating that we received, where we're going to be going with that information, and close out with an update on our communications plan as well as some dates for engagement later in the summer and fall. And so we have a lot to cover here. We'll be as quick as we can. But given kind of the breadth of what we're trying to present, if anyone has any questions, ask us as we go. So, thank you, Walter. You want to take over?
Yeah, welcome, Walter and Greg too. Thank you. Awesome, so we'll run through a with quick history of, of where we were and, and where we're heading. So we started in the feasibility phase, very similar to the Blanche James Project, working through the programming of the facilities, working through the existing conditions, finalizing those reports, coming up with options to study to come up with solutions and, and ultimately lead to a preferred solution by evaluating those options and selecting that preferred, those preferred options. That all occurred in twenty twenty-two. As we've been working through twenty twenty-three, we've been working through the schematic design. So we've been developing that preferred option. I think at this point, everyone knows it is a fire substation across from Hilliards on Main. And then the DPW facility and the police, police and fire headquarters, so the public safety building, at the five twenty-four Depot Street. So highlighted on the screen right now, you can see where we are at the schematic design level. We are ninety-nine percent of the way through the schematic design. Again, receiving the estimates in the last few weeks, developing those, and coming up with value management. So from there, we're going to head into that outreach and funding. And then at the completion of that, pending a, an approval from the voters of Easton, we move into the design development stage, construction documents, bidding procurement, and then the construction administration.
So the process here really mimics the same that Blanche James took. So a very similar process. Get a lot of information, go back for funding, and then proceed with design if it passes at the town meeting. Sure, so in, in programming, I think we've seen this slide before. Really, we started and programmed each department individually, came up with what they needed. You know, this isn't really an elaborate project. These are needs that these departments have, not wants necessarily. Most of the departments are severely undersized in their current facilities, which we'll, we'll see. And that's kind of one step of the three-step process in the feasibility study, which is programming, looking at those existing conditions in the year existing facilities, and then looking at potential site options, which Walter alluded to as well. Come up with three options. I think here we actually came up with eight different options. Narrowed that down to one, which the building committee selected. That we'll show you a little bit for tonight. That is what's taken into schematic design. In schematic design, we start to flush those things out a little bit more, validate all of the work that was done in feasibility study, and then put some costs to it. That's the process we take to make sure that every step of the way, we're checking back, getting solid numbers, making sure we're on target for, you know, where we are with square footage, where we are with dollars, and where we are with scope and insights.
Yep, so that, the beginning stages of that programming is really identifying the challenges. The DPW, Water, Police, Fire, as you'll see over the next couple of slides, they are significantly outdated. They are significantly undersized, which was vetted by that programming. Some of them, two to three times less than what those programs call for. And these slides are just highlighting a lot of those deficiencies throughout all of those departments.
And so we've, we've looked at these before. Everybody sort of knows where the buildings are. But just to reorient people, where the public safety buildings are across town, where the public works or the kind of main public works facilities are across town. I'd say Public Works does have a number of other kind of ancillary facilities across town that aren't shown on this map that they use for storage and, and other, other needs. But these are the big ones that we're really looking to replace. You know, the police, built in nineteen sixty-eight, ten thousand five hundred square feet. We're now programmed around thirty thousand square feet. Just kind of shows you the deficiency in space we're dealing with in the existing facilities. Looking at Fire Station One, which is connected to the police department, again, about ten thousand five hundred square feet. If you look at this in a holistic way, this would become a, a substation, about thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. So close for a substation, but you'll start to see the difference as we go on to Station Two. Station Two would be kind of an ancillary building used for public safety needs in this, in this model, but wouldn't remain an active fire station. That building right now is about four thousand square feet, very undersized for a fire station. The apparatus have a hard time fitting in there with ample room around them as with other stations. And so we'll go on to Station Three. You know, built in the nineteen eighties. Right now, it's about thirteen thousand square feet. Again, for public safety, when we're at the main fire station with the headquarters, we're programmed around thirty thousand square feet. As we come to DPW, currently DPW is about fifteen thousand square feet. For public works side of the house, we'll call it for now, we're at about forty-two thousand square feet. So significantly undersized. A lot of that is proper vehicle storage. In the water division over on Bay Road, that's about seventy-five hundred square feet right now. Much of it is inaccessible. I'd say almost all of it is inaccessible. They're programmed as part of the DPW building. They're about sixteen thousand square feet now. So they're about double the size of where their current operations are to get all of their fleet in. And just a little bit about the proposed solution. We're, we're looking at a proposed solution that has two sites with four different buildings on them. At Daley's Corner, so across from the Sheep's Pasture and across from Hilliards, on a corner that is owned by Stone Hill, a substation, so about thirteen thousand five hundred square feet. That substation allows for coverage on the northern side of town, direct access to both Main Street and Route one thirty-eight. Gets you up and down very quickly. And then a, a public safety headquarters, so police and fire, on five twenty-four Depot, as well as DPW, so a consolidated DPW facility also on that five twenty-four Depot site. That five twenty-four site is part of the, you know, the former guild property. And we developed about ten acres of that site in, as part of this project.
So getting into the cost section, as Walter noted, we received the construction cost estimates back a couple of weeks ago, and that's really going to kick us into the final stretch of this project. As the board here is very well aware, we've, we've done dozens of presentations on this project. Given the scope of a project's intended to design to replace more than a half dozen buildings across all our largest operating divisions, the budget's only going to be substantial. However, we certainly don't want to take for granted that the size and scale of what we're trying to accomplish here means we can just bandwave concerns about budget and about costs. So we want to make sure we provide up-to-date information on construction as well as estimates on soft costs as the project iterates. And also that we do the necessary kind of comparative analysis to answer what we think are reasonable questions any, any old person looking at this would, would ask. Why does it cost what it cost? What are the price drivers there? Can't we just renovate the existing buildings that we have and do this for less money? Given the uncertainty of the market, can't we just pause and do this in the future? Could we phase the construction by department? Maybe do a police and then fire and public works to save money? What would a comparable project somewhere else cost? And what can we do as a municipal government to minimize those costs that we do decide we're saving the project? And so we have a lot of information in the next few slides, but if you keep those questions in mind, that's really what we're hoping to answer as we go through these comparative figures. So, Walter, if you would.
Connor, before we talk about the costs, one thing that just jumped out at me that I think that people will have a question about is, and one of the things that happens when we talk about this a lot, we already know what we're talking about, but I just want to call this out for people at home that there was a study done about response times. And when, you know, if these are proposed to be moved to the substation up by Hilliards and then five twenty-four Depot, does anybody want to just speak to that for...
Sure. So you're right, a comprehensive response time study was done. And what we were looking at there was, was specific to drive times from existing stations to where the proposed stations would be, as well as looking at the, I'd say, resiliency of the fire response. As, as many of you know, currently, Station Two and Station One are, sorry, Station Two and Station Three are staffed by two firefighters. So when those firefighters leave on a response, they're, they're taking the engine and that station is essentially dark during the response. Sorry, that may have changed slightly since we did the response time study, but at the time of the study, that was the case. And so what happens is portions of the town go uncovered to some extent, particularly on the southeastern side toward Depot Street and toward the Mansfield Line for durations where the ambulance is, is out to the hospital. So by consolidating staff and, and operations into two facilities, those facilities are a little bit more resilient during that response. There are still people in there that can take an ambulance or things like that to respond to a call, even though an ambulance may be out of service, as well as just more effective operations. Having a full crew staffing the fire station is just a little bit more efficient for the fire department. So that resulted in essentially no change in service for either, any of the options we, we studied in the response time study.
And it's important to know that, so thank you, Dottie, for bringing out that. That is, that is a big kind of programmatic change going from a three-station model to a two-station model. So we're sensitive to that. We do have a response time study up on our website, easton.me slash MBC. But, you know, major population centers, places that we, you know, people are concerned about shopping, assisted living, apartments, school complexes are all still within that rapid response. And we've basically taken the existing operational staff and spreading them out a few further buildings.
And even now, when you say that, you know, a, a site might be docked because everything's in use, that doesn't mean just, again, thinking like somebody who doesn't know about this. That doesn't mean if you call for help, you're not going to get it. You'll get it from surrounding communities and mutual aid. But this will just be much more efficient if, if we do it this way. but this will just be much more efficient if if we do it this way.
Dottie, one other thing I'd like to just recap now, seeing when we met with some of our other boards and committees, they were unaware of how long, you know, going back to Dorian Whittier, right? The first study when they looked at programmatically how these buildings are no longer capable of, you know, knowing that our population now is close to twenty-six thousand people and programmatically these were built for ten, fifteen thousand people. So going back, so this isn't something, we don't want people to think we just in the last year, right? This this even began in, you know, Tom Whittier.
That Dorian Whittier was twenty-fourteen.
Twenty-fourteen, and then coming into the pandemic, we were working towards this project pretty heavily.
Right.
Had to shell a lot of the conversation, things that we were working towards. So the fact that some people think this is new or that we're just now coming around and why didn't we wait so long? And that's not the case, it's not as if we kept pushing this off. It's been, we've been waiting to find the opportune time, and I know we'll get into that, I think, in this presentation about why now? And people are going to say, well, why didn't you do it fifteen years ago or twenty years ago? And these buildings were really probably reaching their opposite levels, I think you talked about.
Thank you, James.
Absolutely. So we'll jump into the construction cost estimate. So what you see on the screen right now, again, I just want to make it very clear, this is construction cost. Total project budget includes soft costs and contingencies, which are about thirty percent on top of construction costs. So PMA has an independent check estimator, KDA has the estimate of record. PMA and KDA sit with both estimators for about six to eight hours one single day, and we run through a line-by-line check of every single thing that's in these buildings in the estimate. Typically, you want to be within five percent when you come out, and that's included on every line, but we were within two, almost two and a half percent, so these were very close estimates. Again, estimate of record at a hundred and fourteen point three million, construction cost, and check estimate at a hundred and eleven. That puts us roughly at a total project budget pending value management and value and scope discussions that I think occurred with the building committee of tomorrow night and on August first, of about a hundred and forty-six point eight million plus or minus, based on those decisions. Some assumptions and qualifications. This project would be bid under a Chapter one forty-nine general contractor. It's likely that there would be a separate contractor for the substation versus another contractor for the DPW and public safety building, based on historic estimates and information from our estimators. To run a Chapter one forty-nine A construction manager at risk would add eight to fifteen percent on that. Again, Blanche James was a general contractor, PMA and KDA have both worked with general contractors and construction managers, but we both feel that the recommendation to go for a general contractor, Chapter one forty-nine, would be in the benefit of Easton for saving money. Typically, a construction manager at risk lends itself to a phased occupied renovation where there's a lot more risk involved. Not to say that there's not risk in construction, but these sites are undeveloped, haven't been used, haven't been used for anything municipal or any other type of building. This would also assume the escalation started control, escalation to the fall, start of construction to the fall of twenty twenty-four, and the construction, again, the construction budget values above total project budget to be developed based on the final value management decisions from the MVC. So we will jump back for a quick cost comparison. It's a little bit of a deep, sorry to interrupt that. For where we were when decisions were made, and we are right in alignment for where that option five B. In fact, we've brought brought it back a little bit. So we were right around a hundred and twenty million, somewhere between a hundred and seven and a hundred and twenty-one when we had that schematic feasibility study cost estimate. And now that we've narrowed that and we will we will keep dialing in that budget, we're right around the a hundred and fourteen million dollar mark.
So I I think what you see here is a narrowing of the estimates, they're getting much closer together. We're we're getting more and more accuracy in the estimates, so the estimators are making less assumptions, and and that results in a much closer estimate in the comparison. So where there was originally a pretty big spread, now you have a much smaller spread and and a higher level of confidence that that budget, you know, that number can be used to establish a total project budget.
I'm having deja vu on this from the Blanche James. Looking at this in the first pass and all the steps that come after that to really refine the numbers, I never would think I would ever say something like this, but being on a committee like that, it was fascinating. Things that I never really thought that we'd be looking at before, so I think that that was a fun part of the process to to really be looking at everything with a flying tooth comb at that point.
Absolutely. So Connor mentioned earlier in the meeting, why not just renovate the buildings, the twelve buildings that are being utilized by police, fire, and DPW water? On the left-hand side of the screen, you will see what it would take to renovate and add the programmatic needs to those buildings. You're looking at roughly a hundred and fifty-plus million where we're looking at for option five B, just below a hundred and fifty million. That is not to say that that option is a feasible option because those programs do not fit on the existing facilities, they are spread over twelve buildings. There are limitations on all of those sites, so it really is not a it's just an apples-to-apples comparison of what that construction and the total project budget would cost if that were available to be done.
And I would say that in in that option, you know, Alter, you mentioned Chapter one forty-nine or CM at Risk before, you would have to proceed in that way with that option because the the project would be so complex. Again, it is kind of theoretical at this point, but that's a place where you would have to go, all right, well, we need a construction manager on board early to start vetting through all of these things, which which costs money. So just how you get to those numbers is is a little bit complicated, but the due diligence has been put in to make sure that as we go through each different scenario, we have some validated numbers that we can put to it and and show the costs, not just the the implications at the site.
I think it's also worth adding on that approach, that outside of construction management approach, you would end up with a project that would require a functionally temporary housing for police and particularly firefighters, which can add a substantial amount of cost to the project because you you can't temporarily close one of the stations for a year plus of construction and not have somewhere that's up to people's standards for first responders typically.
And that is carried in this, actually, is the orange bar right below the red, so that's what you can.
Right, so you're looking at a seven-digit expense just for a temporary set that goes away.
Just for temporary, yeah. Possibly an eight, possibly an eight digit.
You've worked with that, done that, it costs in excess of seven.
Uh, yeah, there it it's temporary facilities for police and fire is very expensive. Same with DPW, you know, if you're if you're going to house apparatus temporarily, the options aren't great. And the in the space to do that just really doesn't exist here in Easton on the existing sites. They just don't have enough room on the existing sites that are that is developable.
I think it's worth noting that us both having been on the school planning committee, this is important to get out in front of now because it's a very good question that the community will ask is why not the existing? Why don't we renovate? And this is not a futile, all the work that you've done and put into this theoretical scenario is so important because now we can look at, we talked about the same thing, you could move students out or the cost to do that and put them in temporary trailers, what it was not unlike what we would be asking of our, you know, public service.
Providing.
First responders, yeah. So it's, I think it's really, this is more valuable, less so now because it's it's once it's asked for, and now that we've done the work in advance of being asked by the community to show this.
I also think it's worth pointing out, and I don't think Greg will do it because, you know, most of these experts are pretty humble, but KDA has director of world experience in this as well, we've done, we've done public safety consolidation projects, and they also work as a designer for Sembrec, which we consolidated for towns dispatches during COVID. And so when we're looking at trailers and everyone is having a good day, and we work to find ways to, you know, kind of do temporary operations within existing police stations because of just how incredibly overwhelming and difficult that one is. So this is somewhere that I I know Greg's seen this, maybe too, from experience.
Yeah, from experience.
So Connor also mentioned what the cost of waiting is on construction. So up on your screen, you're going to see what is driving escalation or what the history of escalation has been since two thousand ten. And and really, since that KDA study in two thousand fourteen was done, you're looking at almost seventy percent escalation since, I'm sorry, KDA, since Dorian Whittier did the initial feasibility study. So that was what would, that information is what was used to develop the slide you previously saw. And then forecasting for the future, we're using a lot of a lot of the information that's carried in this chart. But it is a significant, significant number that has occurred over the past four years, really since COVID. You could see almost thirty-one, I believe, percent in twenty twenty. It's, it just holding off does not let itself even carrying the cost from from two thousand ten to two thousand seventeen, you're looking at eight percent annually, five to eight percent annually over that time period.
So escalation is compounding, everybody knows compounding interest in in what that does to 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 budgets, and and that's one of the reasons why, as we look at some historic projects, there will be significant differences in terms of square foot cost and things like that. It is generally speaking escalation. This has been tracked pretty thoroughly in Massachusetts by the MSBA. So we have some good data on on what school projects have been doing and, you know, being able to speak from a place where we, you know, both PMA and KDA work in both markets, I'd say that the market in public safety has has, you know, pretty much tracked with what we see in schools. Generally speaking, the same contractors working on these projects, the same subcontractors working on these projects. So the labor force tends to be the same and the prices tend to scale with each other. So we'll get into some some additional data, the slides coming up.
Yep, so what would be the theoretical cost of one project, waiting five years, running through the next version of that, our next piece of that project, and then in ten years, running through the third piece of that project? That hundred and forty-six point eight million plus or minus budget, you know, split into three phases over ten years, in the most economical way to be done would be about a hundred and eighty-one million, it's a delta of about almost thirty-five million. That's not to say that this wouldn't lend itself to needing additional, you know, hardship, or there wouldn't be additional hardships on these bodies, DPW, police, fire, for operating in one new building versus having the other facilities keep moving. It would be very difficult to do that in general, not just for the money. But, you know, we're carrying thirty-five percent escalation from the twenty-four to twenty-nine, and then the seventy percent carried from twenty-four to thirty-four. No swing spaces carrying these, we hard bid twenty percent soft cost and then about the seven and a half and the million dollars in some cost contingencies. So really similar to what carrying for the project budget is carried for the number that you see in phase in the project as well.
So that's just the construction, you know, the building costs and the soft cost and contingency, right?
This is total pro, this is what total project is splitting in that five. Doing one project now, five years, doing another project, and finishing that third project five years later.
But what I'm thinking also is if you phase it, the existing buildings are requiring a lot of maintenance.
Exactly.
A lot of money goes into those. And so not only are you going to be escalating the cost, you're also going to be still carrying the costs of the buildings that weren't phased in yet. So I feel like it's important to note that that's added onto that number as well.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and and this is again, a bit of a theoretical exercise, you know, forecasting this far into the future for us is a bit of a slippery slope, I'd say. And and we'd probably be on on the losing side and the project costs would probably be higher just based on our 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 reality and track record. You know, projecting out ten years into the future, there's a lot of unknowns there. If somebody told me ten years ago to expect fifteen percent escalation year over year, I would have told them that was the craziest thing I've ever heard, that's been the track record the last two years. So, you know, that's a long scale, a look forward at what could happen, and there there's, you know, some some information we can gather from that, but it's certainly not a recommendation to do so.
Well, and I think, you know, recognizing and and being humble about that, none of us know, you know, what conditions five to ten years out would be, is the right thing to do, but it it's it comes from the same place, right? So one of the one of the urges I would leave, one one face with numbers of the scale, say, well, why don't we wait? We don't know what things will look like, is we agree with the top. We know what they've looked like the past decade, we know what they've looked like, I don't know, but the scale is too small with my eyes. Goes back very far. But, you know, you look at things like, you know, Fed rates, we don't know what they will be in years to come, right? But what we do know is that currently, even if you set aside the astonishing year-over-year growth in COVID, the trajectory has, pre-COVID, and is continuing to be up. And, you know, waiting, even if this project proceeds and is approved by voters in the fall, you don't go to construction until a year after that, you'll bond a large part of subsidies until years after that. So there's a certain level of risk and uncertainty that we want to just have eyes open about many multi-year construction projects. So that's why, you know, I appreciate the the caveat, we're we're not truly looking at the cost risk in two thousand thirty-four, but just kind of illustrating that that risk is there. And if risk along was a reason to halt what we're doing, it doesn't get better, frankly.
Well, it's not going to get less expensive, it's not even going to stay the same. So whether it goes up five percent, ten, fifteen, twenty, it's it's still going up, so.
And so Greg had mentioned that we have a lot of data that we can pull from, from the Masters of School Building Authority, and that's where this information is from. This actually does go back all the way to two thousand ten, late two thousand nine. So you can see that trend made of running all the way from from two thousand ten to about twenty twenty. And then, sorry, guy.
Well, I just want to point out that the orange line is probably the line to track. That's the average of cost per square foot, construction cost per square foot for schools. So the orange line is Massachusetts schools' average construction cost. The rest are trend lines for other things. But as you can see, you know, two thousand ten was, you know, late two thousand ten, two thousand eleven was about the worst school construction market we've seen. That orange line never really dipped. We never really went down in construction cost for school construction in Massachusetts. It leveled out quite a bit, and it's continued to rise since then, so.
So what we're illustrating here is the Blanche James project that went to voters in late twenty twenty and broke ground in twenty twenty-one. You know, if we were going to put that project out on the street today, we'd be looking at almost a hundred and forty-seven million dollars, so. It's a significant cost, and and this is information that is readily available and projecting out almost to a more similar situation.
No, I think it's worth noting, so that ninety-four point eight million, that was the actual project budget we went to voters with in the fall of twenty nineteen. And it's worth pointing out, although certainly not, hang on, I had on this, but thankfully, much like with the numbers we're looking at here, a substantial portion of that is construction contingency, because we've always took out a bunch of projects. We frankly, timing was on our side, right? So again, one of these hypotheticals, well, this is really big, this is a lot, why don't we wait? Had we waited in the fall of two thousand and nineteen, because at that time, that number was staggering. For many people, it's roamed the canary. And COVID hit, who knows if that project would have gotten built? And we now know it's finished and it's come in ten-plus million under what that budget was. Certainly not saying, mark your calendars here now, I'm saying this will be ten million under, but there's just a lot you don't know. So we wanted to take the existing market data and say, okay, well, we went to voters with ninety-four point eight million in twenty nineteen. We did it with those assumptions, and if we're doing that in this market, we'll we'll get number big in two thousand and twenty-four.
And so, you know, as we compare projects, project we can speak to is Mansfield, right? It's very similar, it seems, on the face of it. You know, there's a DPW building there, there's a public safety building there, it makes a lot of sense to to compare it. But that's not the whole story, there's a lot of complexities that go into projects. So to try to get a kind of apples-to-apples comparison, we did a couple of things. First, we're going to compare square foot cost. Programs are different, departments are different, towns are different. I think, you know, it may not be a surprise to the folks here, but, you know, I live in Easton, and I was surprised that Easton has a much higher call volume than Mansfield does, has more responses than Mansfield does, has a higher population than Mansfield does, and certainly has a larger geographic area than Mansfield does. So so those things start to contribute to the programming, what's needed for the buildings where they are. Additionally, there's site differences. Mansfield had a pretty prepped site there, it was it was kind of their boneyard for their DPW. They were able to prep most of that and get some of the utilities on themselves because they have some existing, you know, they have a power company in Mansfield, they have their own utility company that was able to do some work kind of to get us to that point. So to strip those things So to strip those things away and just look at building costs is probably the the best comparison we can do to get apples to apples to see like what's, you know, what what I where are we in relationship to Mansfield? So if we look at Mansfield's construction costs, so just the buildings, so pick up the buildings off the site, tip them over, everything that falls out isn't part of it. Just look at the buildings, so uh just building cost in Mansfield, three hundred and twelve dollars a square foot. If we take the escalation that we know we've had over the past years since two thousand sixteen when it was built and get it to uh the bid date for this uh project in twenty twenty five, we're at about five hundred and ten dollars a square foot. That same stuff is coming in at about six hundred and fifteen dollars, six hundred and fourteen dollars a square foot for our project. So then we get to take a step back and say, well, okay, why? You know, what what's different here uh than what we did there? Uh and so there are a couple big things. The first one is escalation, we talked about sixty four percent escalation over that, you know, over about nine years is a significant amount of escalation. That's most of where the differences are. But there's also a couple other things that kind of play into effect. So increasing pre-manufact- pre-engineered metal buildings, so what the DPW is made up of, so about half the the project is made up of pre-engineered metal building. Those metal building costs have increased ninety seven percent in that timeframe. Now, it's still a very economical way to build a building, it's still slightly less expensive than kind of stick-built construction. Uh but it's the the gap between those has closed significantly in that time. Uh and that's one of the major drivers why we're just higher in square footage versus the just escalated cost. Additionally, uh Easton is a green community and as of June, uh Massachusetts' new stretch code is in effect. So uh we have much more stringent uh requirements for the energy usage in our buildings. Uh not a bad thing, it's a it's a great thing for the, you know, the future of the town and and operations. But there are some costs associated with that, uh the stretch and energy code does have some costs associated with it. Additionally, included in our project here, uh our salt storage uh facilities and a fueling station. Those were existing in Mansfield, Mansfield's salt storage happens at the airport or or you know, down past the airport. Uh and their fuel line island was existing, so those weren't in the project costs, they are here. Uh and then I think, you know, we alluded to it uh previously. The the other thing is that we're comparing hard bid numbers to uh schematic design level estimate numbers. So you know, Connor mentioned the savings at bid time uh for the the elementary schools. You know, we realized a pretty significant in savings for Mansfield that, you know, doesn't get flushed out in the numbers uh that you see here. Um you're looking at the real bid savings in Mansfield versus uh all of the contingencies included here for for Easton. Um why they're not different are more elaborate designs, these designs are relatively speaking uh the same level of of um you know, complexity. High-end finishes aren't involved, uh these things are are essentially the same uh types of buildings um as you see in Mansfield. Uh same level of quality, same level of finish, uh you know, responsible quality finishes, but nothing elaborate or uh bonus.
They're they're interesting.
Yeah. And just, you know, that's kind of why we we kind of pull those things away uh from the rest of the kind of unrelated site costs that tend to vary much more, uh you know, vastly over different sites. Uh we have uh a little bit different soil conditions here in Easton, things like that, that that affect the cost of the rest of the project. But this is a a really good apples to apples comparison. So just on that that stretch code, um you know, Mansfield, uh so we're gonna talk about energy use intensity and you'll start to hear this more and more as as the stretch code comes into play. So how much energy per square foot the building uses over a cost over the course of a year? So Mansfield, about a hundred and eighty. Uh we're looking at buildings here in in Easton, somewhere around forty to fifty percent less than that, uh fifty eight to seventy one. Uh that's not saying, you know, there's no energy use, these you these are large buildings, they use a lot of energy. Uh but compared to what we would have been, uh you know, nine years ago, it's a much more efficient building. And the way we get there is additional ins- insulation, uh improved building envelopes, better windows, doors, uh overhead doors, things like that. Uh some more efficiency in the mechanical systems and some more efficiency in the lighting systems. Uh basic things, uh but you know, buying more, especially the insulation in the envelope, costs a little bit more money. There's a big bang for your buck there because you have to pay a lot less in energy. The benefits really are are the lower annual energy costs. And there's some incentives that are possible in these projects. Uh MassSave uh has a pretty robust uh rebate program uh to the tune of about two point four million dollars if we went to a geothermal system. Uh and the Inflation Reduction Act had a a a an incentive that goes to renewable energy, which geothermal would be considered in to the tune of about two point two million dollars, about thirty percent of the uh system cost. Because this is a uh municipally bonded project, it's fifteen percent less than the thirty percent. But I uh digress, I won't get into the the incentive mumbo jumbo from uh federal government. But there are some significant savings uh that can be had uh in the right circumstances here uh for the project.
Are you uh pricing it with and without solar? I know with solar ready.
Uh with geothermal, there is an option for geothermal and uh
Solar.
Uh so they are solar-ready buildings, um and they would be uh kind of positioned so that the town could you know, in theory expand their existing or or new um
Yeah, we agree. Right, so sorry to jump out, but so similarly to what we did with Blanche James Elementary School, um typically, and although not an expert in solar regulatory environment, what you do is municipal government is do an EPI agreement or some kind of comparable other agreement where you are not necessarily the owner of panels, you would need space of of the owner of panels who put it on your infrastructure. We did this in landfill, then on the schools, we're active in a process with town meetings authorization. Uh doing it at Blanche James. So we would make sure that the buildings are designed and built in a way that they're mountain ready. Uh and we already have our solar consultant uh who was involved in those past projects, the current one, Blanche James, it's already connected up with the design team to make sure that we're positioned for that. So that uh if and when we start rapid construction in two thousand twenty seven, um so you know, we the solar environment might look quite different. Um one of the added benefits of this is that um if we wind up with a geothermal system, you know, that that seems to be a way uh the stretch code and incentives of the state federal are pushing a lot in that direction. And so while there's certainly capital cost upfront, it does positions buildings to be much more future-ready, uh which as we know, is the current holders of buildings ranging between forty and a hundred and something years old. If we do this, it's been used for decades and decades, so uh it would put us against standing. So we're making sure to design that and position that uh in a way that we can maximize that solar potential. So further offset the energy cost and the carbon footprint.
So um this is uh kind of the next steps of of where that budget's gonna be taken. Um and a lot of you will recognize this uh Excel sheet uh from the work on the Blanche James. Um this is gonna be reviewed with the um Municipal Building Committee tomorrow evening, uh initially presented to them and then reviewed with them again on eight one. Um so here you can see in the light red, the light orange, the light blue, light red being the fire substation, light orange being public safety and light blue being DPW. PMA and KBA along with the estimators have gone through and looked for any type of value management um that could be uh in taken uh to lower that construction cost. Um you can see that all three of these facilities fit almost onto one page. Um that's really showing that they're not designed with um high-end finishes, they're not designed with things that these programs are not needing. Um even some of these items that are in here are reducing potentially uh scope that um you know, if if a budget number needed to get down to a certain number in order to um make sure that we're uh be able to uh satisfy the needs of the program. Um so that's still going on, um and it's gonna be reviewed with Municipal Building Committee. While one of the items in here is that geothermal item that uh Greg just mentioned. So that's gonna be a big discussion point with Municipal Building Committee. I know that there's a lot of discussion at town meeting in support of geothermal in Easton. Um but there is an upfront cost for it, Greg mentioned the rebates. Um so that'll be a discussion point, uh whether to bring that into the upfront costs and calculate those rebates and and uh really have that discussion to make sure we hit those EY and make sure we hit the stretch energy code. Um so it's a live exercise that's one, it's gonna be ran through and it really allows the building committee to understand what is in these buildings um and and what the town would be buying for that money uh and what those facilities would look like. Um so again, live exercise tomorrow night presenting this information along with the costs and then uh on eight one with Municipal Building Committee um making final decisions and voting on the final project scope and budget, uh which will allow um pass it back over to Connor to talk about budget and next steps.
Sure, thank you Walter. So um we're just kind of closing out on financial section. This presentation, we've covered a lot of ground and some pretty large numbers, um and we have more work to do. Uh we've already engaged our financial advisors, it's working with uh PMA for multi-year uh cash flow analysis to build debt models off of, much like we did in advance of voter decisions for Blanche James Elementary School, um which will help inform a financial approach for board uh and the public uh where we can feel good that would be information we have. We're minimizing and spreading out that financial impact. Um just in the interest of full transparency, this hundred and forty six, one hundred and forty eight billion dollar number, uh before that to be bonded all at once, that would require an exclusion of almost nine million dollars compared to your existing tax levy of seventy billion. Um thankfully, that's not the way that these are financed, we don't borrow all at once. Um and that also assumes that the entire cost is carried uh in the general fund, which is not necessarily the way you would approach a project that has the financial press department department in it. Um so we'll be spending the next two months uh on the tasks you see up here on screen um to responsibly prepare, you know, the most cost-effective approach for the board and Municipal Building Committee uh to consider that includes the value management and project scope that we just touched on. Uh it includes the cash flow, multi-year bond uh formation. It includes assessing how much of the project, specifically Public Works Water Division um can and ought to be carried uh of enterprise fund borrowing. Much like, you know, we've done water uh treatment plants, those are not done through the general um capital process or through debt exclusions because you have the ability to fund them through rates. Um doing these tasks will enable us in the next couple of months to uh deliver a draft project financial impact analysis for Municipal Building Committee and the select board in August. Um recommending a project uh funding approach in advance, uh where we will ask you to schedule a special, we won't say a special special, but a a special town meeting in the fall, which we anticipate asking you to do at your August twenty first meeting. Uh and that gives us a little bit more runway to get more feedback um for a final financial impact analysis and what most folks really, really care about, which is a tax impact analysis uh for your first meeting in September um in advance for board voting, uh the corresponding debt exclusion election. This is the exact same cadence and model we use for Blanche James Elementary School project. And the goal here is to have actionable cost information available for the public to inform uh education outreach during fall before voters uh ultimately decide to fade the project. So um that's what we have prepared to talk about budget before we move into uh the public outreach kind of flow now. Are there any more questions anyone would like to ask?
So at this point, there's no uh beef on that slide, the impact on an average single family.
Fine.
Yeah.
We need to, we need to develop.
Yeah, no, I I I uh I understand.
Yep.
So maybe we could give you back the models, but it would not be particularly helpful uh given we need to show what it looks like over multiple years following the cadence of borrowing, right? Because these don't just show up on your tax bill.
Understood, they escalate, they can come down.
Yeah, slowly over years.
I think I can understand that, but that's the hundred and forty seven million dollar question that I'll be I'll be asked by people of this town, how big this is gonna be. I know Greg and I mentioned that every single time we talk, but like this, this is awesome. I would, I, this would be amazing. It comes down to um cost or how it affects the single family, almost their property tax. So that's, you know, pretty much remain quiet as I see that.
That's fair, understood.
Because part of that, not unlike uh our approach with Blanche James was um and I'm not trying to go overboard, it would be clear, it would be sizable, right? Um at that time with Blanche James, we had forecasted about five hundred extra per year. Um and as we were working towards that, um feedback from the board and the community, we made sure we included town meeting, um statutory provisions where we could to have tax aid committees and things like that put together. Uh just trying to offset some of those costs for folks who may believe in the mission, but it's just they cannot afford it and that's understandable. That's a very real reality for people.
Right.
Um and so we did adopt those and thanks to ARBA, um you know, contribute hundreds of thousands of that aid. We'll be looking at all their uh potential um options from board, consider as well as partners. It's a kind of, I don't wanna call it financial reform package, also really marketing and dramatic, but we'll be looking at um uh giving you as many options as there are.
Like we do with policies.
Without, correct, but without trying to oversell it, although there is a way to do this.
Totally understand, I think it is.
And achieve it and and fast.
How much money did we get through uh MSBA?
That is another uh
So the, I mean.
real challenge, so the MSBA contributed over thirty million to that.
Right, so that so it brought us to like sixty, sixty-ish and that's just, that's miles apart from a hundred and forty seven, so
That's correct. Correct.
you know, it's it's a whole different animal.
Yes, and just for anyone watching this, it we we're painfully aware and it's um not how we want it to be.
Uh. Like all of that. Mm-hmm.
Um but I feel that's just the way of state funding programs are structured right now.
It's a very essential, understood. Mm-hmm.
And you know, that that it is worth talking about, but because that leans into, okay, well, why don't we wait till the state? Because there has been a bill being proposed for many years where perhaps those uh municipal building authority, much like the MSBA, would be created. But that leads into looking at what the cost of waiting is, which is with um you know, Blanche James, we have roughly a third, maybe forty percent um covered by a grant. If we waited and it takes five, ten years for that to happen, setting aside the very legitimate concerns of ongoing capital spend, you may end up with a grant that offsets at that point inflated project budget where your net spend is still worse than a Q. So now, you know, we'll love it. It ultimately, it's gonna be up to voters to decide. Um but from a purely planning perspective, you would never wanna bank on um a hypothetical grant down the road because, you know, would fifty million towards this be awesome, it would cool, it'd be really cool. But if it's fifty million, five to ten years from now, a price tag's a quarter billion, you're worse off, so.
And and that's don't the the other big thing is look how long we spent applying for the MSBA. So even if a municipal building is, you know.
Right, the legislation passes, it could take years to be operationalized through administrative agencies.
And and then you're gonna stand in queue with all the other community, all the other, I might skip through any second one.
It's not a factor in my mind, it's a
No, but it's a very good point that I think is is worth.
Could take you ten hours.
Yeah.
Or more because it's a brand new program.
Yeah.
So the state auditor did a report last year that showed that it really was focused on Western Mass.
Right.
That's where, that's where they're saying they need the priority for this and that's what's pushing this forward. So we're gonna be behind, you know, Easton's not gonna be at the top of the list, so.
Right. Not at all. But as we work with the schools, which is what I want everyone to address, you know, it was a long time that we spent in then.
I find this.
Right. And got rejected, then they tried.
Now, we rejected, and then, and then even when the program came around and they came through to tour, we were only qualified for one school.
Right.
First.
At first, right? So it wasn't until they saw that the left had uh the condition of the other schools, right?
Yep.
Before the other two were even part of, became part of the scope, so to your point.
But that also was because we, whoever the powers that be, I wasn't on the on the, in the beginning, maybe you were Mark, but they they made a compelling case for the cost benefit analysis that the MSBA was gonna get more bang for their buck by giving the option to consolidate the principal.
Absolutely.
So it was a financial decision on that part, too.
We went with everything. Like why was so successful, I?
I think you push for that, Mark.
I did, definitely, yes.
So kind of, you know, speaking on the cost and talking about uh Mark was talking about, you know, getting that information up to the voters. We can show kind of what we're anticipating um getting to the voters. Connor has the budget information here, but we'll jump to the outreach section and and how we wanna get that information when and and what we um so, oops, sorry. Connor, did you wanna talk to this side or did you want me to?
Uh sure, so we had touched on this in previous presentations, but one of the things that um we're sensitive to uh to Mark's point is that a lot of folks uh don't fully engage these things until it's much more real and translated into what it was like in their budget. So um I don't wanna say we're kind of backloading the outreach, but uh we did do a really large push last fall and we got some some good engagement, but without without that tax impact analysis, I guess that sounds great, but you know, call me what you know what it costs. So um in anticipation of starting to have public meetings uh in a less formal setting than this in August, particularly in September with the tax information, uh we will be launching the website um within a couple of weeks, I believe, Walter. Uh working with folks from PMA. Um you know, we we've done the best we could on the town's website platform, but as of first, I ran into it many, many, many years ago. It's not the easiest to navigate, there's a ton of information, but it's overload, it's just like a infinity scrolling page forever.
Yeah.
It deserves its own website.
Correct, so it'll have its own website, um I guess Walter, I will.
Yeah, we can, we'll jump right to the uh
Speak to them, uh we can walk more through the functionality there, you know, the goal is.
Yeah, absolutely. So um I didn't put the hyperlink on here 'cause it's not active yet, but we have uh really the navigation shown here. So homepage on the left, um really the the way we wanted to build this was to make it accessible uh and easy to find. Um so that interactive FAQ page, so really all the information that we put in in this presentation and you know, this is really consolidated, there will be even more on that FAQ page, you know, why it's so expensive, where where the issues are, what the issues are, what's being resolved, how how the decisions were made. Um so that'll be part of the FAQ page, uh Um so that'll be part of the FAQ page. Uh you'll see a video section where we have the tours that were done by police, fire, DPW. Um PMA's uh marketing team is working on some videos similar to what the school did, where you had the fifteen to an, fifteen minute to an hour tour video, but then they had the two-minute video of here are the significant deficiencies of those buildings. So we'll have the long form video that's already on ECAT on the YouTube page, and then we'll have the short form video uh on the page as well. Documents will be up there. Uh we also have that contact page and almost every single page on the website has a place for someone to enter their email address or click to sign up for, for these links. Um we're also gonna have um the PMA team email uh available for questions that need to be asked. So we'll be able to take those. Um if they are getting asked significantly, we'll dump them into the FAQ, uh uh we'll run them through uh the team and make sure a, a response and a timely response is managed through that. And then there's also links to both the ECAT Municipal Building Committee uh page so that all, they can get right to those videos. And then um really when there's information on the budget and those uh tax impacts are um finalized and the debt modeling is created, uh we wanna blast that social media. So a Facebook presence page um to be able to answer questions on that. Um so it'll be kinda uh synonymous with each other. You'll be able to link right to it. Um and then really that important question that you were asking, Mark, there'll be a tax impact calculator as soon as it's ready and as soon as it's available so that someone can jump right on the website, plug in their home value and see what their ant- anticipated tax uh impact would be. Excellent. Um so PMA's developing all that uh internally with our marketing team. Um and that'll be ready, one to two weeks, I would say, ready to, to go live. So we're working with uh Karen and his team, internally with Greg and his team, getting information ready, getting it uploaded. Uh and we just wanna make sure the navigation is um easy on that webpage before it goes live. Uh we're considering if we want the Easton Public Safety Project, um.
Yeah, we, we gotta figure out a short, easy, broad, all that. We could give people verbally, that's actually doable and we'll, we'll make sure that it's up for the town prior, the towns' little channels.
We can, we can. We can toy with that. Yeah.
And uh adding that to the agendas for every time this is discussed, working forward. And so uh.
So two weeks, this will be ready approximately, yeah. So the tax impact calculator?
No, no, no. It will be, it will be on there. It's not live until we have that information.
That would be good. Okay.
Understood.
Right.
I'll say a big loss we've had in public communication media has been the paper, where we had the Easton Journal and that was a really big, it was a conversation center for a lot of people.
Hundred percent.
So that's where they read. And I too, I was guilty of, I liked the paper.
Yeah.
And I read it every Friday. So we need to overcome that loss.
Right. That's, so, so we will have to do a few things separately when we get the Blanche A's project, our build project page on, on social media. Um social media can always be really challenging for a whole host of reasons, but that is for better or for worse where a lot of people get their information at this point. Uh and so there will be a product, you know, staff at PMA manage that, push information out, um you know, give factual information. It's, you know, it's not an advocacy page, but having that presence there so that folks who read about it or hear about it can go somewhere. Not everyone wants to go on the website. It's just reality. Additionally, we'll need to have printed materials for folks who are not on social media and the paper is not gonna cover it. Um so we're gonna have to try to pivot into it differently. We've never had to do that before without a paper. Uh and so we think we're, you know, being reasonably informed by our past experience of what the environment is now.
Excellent. Um so on the screen, you see kind of the high level next steps, uh where you're at. Um really nothing, nothing new on this page. We'll jump right to the next one. Um more in detail roadmap to that uh ballot vote. So we're here tonight on the tenth. Uh we meet uh with the, and this is roadmap to ballots, so it doesn't have the municipal building committee until that decision's made on um eight one. Uh select, select board, more on the outreach roadmap uh on the twenty first um with uh tax impact right around the eight twenty one, nine eleven meeting. Um we'd probably like to have it for that eight twenty one meeting.
We'll have, we'll have preliminary tax.
Preliminary and then a final for that nine one.
Uh. For a meeting in August, a final one.
Yep. Um and then in the green, you see the um special town meeting and the ballot vote.
Yeah, so we're, we're um starting to do what we do with any uh town meeting or election is making sure that all the key stakeholders with facilities necessary, the the clerk and all those folks are available. And so what we're tentatively looking at is October twenty third, which is a Monday for the special town meeting and uh Saturday, November fourth. So we've got another nuance here, uh for the debt exclusion, another nuance here. I see everyone writing uh just, I will first of all, I'll float it. I'll see if, make sure that was fine for the board. We don't need to ask me right now. Um we've reached out to the staff in those departments to check building availability because obviously there's logistics there. Um as well as working with Danielle to make sure that that aligns up from, there's only so much time between what the select board votes to call, the election, and what you have to have it. And there's obviously some differences this time with what my mail being available, which will be an option for folks um uh as well. So those are tentatively the dates we're looking at. And if no one has any additional objections to those tonight, then we'll do more, you know, a deeper dive and make sure they're, can we line up there.
Projections to those cases or?
Sure.
Oh, uh, I, I totally can't remember.
Right. So I can answer that now. So that's what we're thinking of, of, so.
Uh and then right here, kind of last slide before questions, uh just municipal building committee, if anyone wants to attend these meetings, uh hybrid and in person. Uh in person here tomorrow evening and on eight one. We'll also have the Zoom information available. That's posted. Um September meeting is intended to be scheduled. Uh and then select board meetings, uh we didn't throw the dates on deck. We didn't know when we have been. This is from previous, but we know uh we'll be here on tonight and then on eight twenty one as well uh with more information. And then on nine eleven with um the select board as well.
And people can always email the select board with questions. We can, we can field them that way. Uh we, we welcome questions and inquiries on this project.
Certainly. Yep. Do you guys need? Absolutely. That was as fast as we could go. Sorry.
You didn't wanna rush through that. That's a lot of really good information in there. So I think you did a really uh very comprehensive um presentation.
No.
Anyone on the board have any questions, comments now that you've turned on this?
I got a couple of questions among comments. Um first, um how well attended the tours? We have those before. What part of the outreach?
They were not.
They were not well attended.
But they were videoed.
The, the videos have, have got a decent amount of use, given that those are very long. And so that's one of the, the, the marketing folks who do this, you have to, you have to chop that into a corner or two-minute video for some folks since they're just not gonna watch the fifteen plus minute.
Yeah. Will they be offered or no? Because there's a point to it.
We, we can. So there's, so there are some, um, the things that we found successful last fall when we were going from feasibility schematic was just going to places where we already know people would be.
Yeah.
Right? So we wanted to be at our T fest. We had handouts at um Houseful Health and its Way State, which was in spring. We will uh have a presence when we do be for good cutting and community day for Blanche A's Elementary, which is August twentieth uh.
Sunday.
Yes, Sunday, August twentieth. We will uh for projects, we will be there. We'll have information on hand. Um without saying, I couldn't distract too much from the project that's being focused on, but we felt that it, it was worthwhile, you know, having a community day for Blanche A's school, which has gone so well, uh to basically take those folks who are engaged in that and hopefully happy with the outcome. Then I'd say, hey, look, this is another one that we've been working on in the background and is coming, you know, heading in prime time. So we'll be there. Uh and we'll, we'll certainly be uh involved at other kind of fall festivals as well. Um we could offer tours. Um again, uh maybe we'll do it in our speed case. Let's see if anyone wants to go, but we're, we're always willing to have people come in, but we tried. We did not have folks um engagement about this.
But that's something that, you know, like I said, if people wanna reach out to us and they want a tour, if it's fifty people, if it's ten people, we'll do whatever we can to accommodate.
Yeah.
Because the Citizens Academy, when they toured those buildings, the two Citizens Academies that we have, overwhelmingly people that, when you're there and you see it in person, uh it, it makes a big difference. So I would love for our biggest problem to be that we're getting overwhelmed with emails saying we wanna do in-person tours. We'll make it happen.
As I was thinking, it's such, it's such an impactful event when you go and see it in person and it really strikes you what, what conditions are.
Well, I think it's worth that. Chairman Municipal Building Case here, hi, anyone's, municipal building neighbor has been in there, financing committee has been in there. So folks who uh kind of are responsible to their neighbors, we're looking through these projects as they go along, have, have been in there. But um we will try again this fall and, and perhaps once we have the tax information, it feels more real, maybe folks will uh uh tour at that point. But we would um plan, like we do at Blanche A's, do a postcard mail, actually, we have every house in Easton uh with, you know, some kind of nice rendering and what site plan might look like and a couple of community forums. Those were reasonably well attended. We did that um for Blanche A's and try to make ourselves available and other events that people want to go to.
You know, the challenge, you know, when you compare this to the school planning project or the school planning committee was that you had so much outreach because you had so many families touched through the schools that they walked through. You know, some of them weekly, and I didn't go to my child's school weekly, but certainly major number of times a year.
Right.
So it was really easy to get the information into then, you know, if you wanted to go for a more detailed tour. It wasn't, the first ones weren't that well attended. It took, we offered that many, many times, but the outreach was so good. And that's the difference here, where I don't think anyone uh lessens the, the impact of our first responders and, and the quality of life that we want for them just as we wanted for the teachers and students of, of this town. So it's just a little more nuanced. It's more difficult to get that outreach done because this, these aren't the things you go to, right?
Yeah, I mean, at least one of our in cases, you know, if that's definitely, it's a building, most people don't try it.
That's, that's right.
Your other person is not saying, oh man, I'm gonna PD today.
And so they're exactly right. They're just not buildings that you're accustomed to walking into unless you're on a ride along.
Feel free though, we'll do uh tours for anybody who's interested.
My other question was around operational cost analysis. Have you done the analysis? I asked this question with school buildings. The answer I got was that because the programming was so off, like it was, didn't represent what was needed, that there was not operational cost savings out of the gate. But over time, it was realized to the efficiencies. We're in a similar situation where the programming is just so out of whack that, you know, the operational piece doesn't matter as much early on, but impact is over thirty years.
So we, we've started to do some kind of preliminary departmental analysis of things where you could, you know, there would be some operational efficiencies and savings, but we, and we will try if it's worth
Yeah.
um the, the numbers to quantify it. Um I mean, there just logically will be efficiencies of having centralized mechanic facilities, fueling facilities uh where you don't have to be sending vehicles to, you know, a dozen plus different sites. Uh but they're not, at this stage, it's not something that's so substantial that we're trying to say, oh, don't worry about that. You know, you know, most capital expenses, we're gonna save it all on fueling efficiencies. But there would be efficiencies there. I think one of the things that we're looking at with geothermal is that if we do go that route, well, there's an incremental cost in front of it. Payback would be based six to seven years.
Say six to eight years uh based on initial findings, uh with, when you include the incentives.
Six to eight years. Right.
Without the incentives, it's somewhere around fifteen to eighteen years. But with the incentives uh that are pretty good, it takes away a lot of that first cost and, and we're able to save quite a bit within the.
Right. So, so after the payback is reaching your six, seven, or eight year, then adding the savings and energy every year. As we know from what we've done with past decade, solar is under efficiencies that can be a meaningful six-figure plus accumulated bar of efforts, LEDs and things of that nature uh across the organization. Uh it doesn't automatically translate, it wouldn't automatically translate to what reduced to annual bond payment because they're in separate buckets. Uh but what that would do is take pressure off other obligations, uh other operational needs not being met, uh other one-term liabilities that we would like to fund. So there, there would certainly be efficiencies there. We've started the early analysis. We'll have probably a little bit more to say about it, but it's not the kind of thing where we think it's gonna dramatically shift, you know, uh eight digits in what we're, another of the project costs.
Yeah, the other thing is just a comment that, and it doesn't tie into this so much, but as we go out communicate it, I think one of my, like, the biggest, most impactful benefits of this is the health and safety element that comes into play for the occupants for using these buildings, especially firefighters who are, will now have better ventilation for um equipment, off-gassing and um, you know, those facilities. And that's really hard to put a price on, but I think something that has to be really understood, public is a huge.
It's a certain part of those videos.
These, yeah.
Yeah, we, we appreciate that. And it's, yeah, that's the kind of the guiding principle is, you know, these are folks across these three departments who um respond on twenty-four seven to take care of the community and this would help take care of them.
Leading, leading cause of death and say it again, right? Firefighters is cancer. And so the question is that gender speeding through this.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we're just don't have the ability in our current buildings to uh ensure the families of these first responders that they will go home in the same condition that they arrived, barring any emergency happening on their ship.
Thank you. Those are great comments. Mark, anything else? You waiting?
Yep. Craig?
Uh Mark, um and I agree on many of the, of the issues that I know relative to the impact on people in this community. Um and so I think part of it is gonna be waiting for that, you know, those, those figures. But also I think it's important to, what you said, Walter, about the people who don't have access to computers. Some of the, some of the folks in this town don't. We have to figure out a way to get that information to them because they're not gonna come to us. So we're gonna have to get to them. Um and I think it's important that we all do the kind of outreach that we need to whenever we're running into people in the community uh and, and support, um you know, this project because it's critical uh for the, for the benefit of this community to do this. So I, I think that, that, that's one of the things I think about is, you know, how do we get that information out to all the people who don't have access to that and not gonna be on Facebook and they're not gonna, they don't go on their computers. They don't want to see a, a video. How do we get to them? Uh so that's really critical. But it's also, and I agree with Mark, that we're kind of sensitive to the impact on people's taxes, certainly.
We did that with the age-friendly action plan when we were trying to do that, um recognizing that we were really gearing it towards the aging and the disability community. And um we did paper, we did signs where people could request paper applications because the other side of that is we don't wanna go print up thousands of packets of paper and be wasteful in that way either. So we would have a couple on site at, you know, the housing authorities, all the apartment complexes, the library, um we had a whole list of places. And we did get, um, we did have a lot of requests, more than I expected, uh for the paper copies. And the veterans groups were really helpful with that too, getting, getting the word out. So we can look at.
As well, Lions, couple of Lions.
Yeah. So we can look at the list that we had for the age-friendly and, and build on that as well.
The Lions were one of the percent they presented to last year. That was one of the better attention uh, so they've been uh five corners, uh the first village, uh we were collaborative. Came together through the sewer construction projects, couple of larger projects we've done. So all well attended.
So I do wanna recognize that we have people in the audience tonight and the chair of the municipal building committee. Thank you for being here tonight, Andy. And I don't wanna put you on the spot, but if you had anything that you wanted to add or any comments, I just wanna recognize that you're here.
Yeah, the only reason I really wanted to come tonight was to hear about the select board, what kind of inputs they may have, you know, we're having a meeting tomorrow. Um but I think we, we kinda heard that, you know, 'cause obviously, you know, the two biggest things in the project is the overall budget as well as building systems. And so I think I'm hearing like geothermal is something we really wanna look at. And we have looked at that a lot. So I think we'll look at those numbers again tomorrow. And um, you know, I, I think as far as the total project cost, it's more of this is what it's gonna cost to meet the program or trying to get to a number, you know, from, you know, from value engineering. Sometimes you can value engineering yourself out of a, you know, a competent project. So um that's really all I wanna say here tonight. So I think I'm good.
Well, I know that you and, and the rest of the members have spent a lot of time on this over the past several years. So I really wanna thank you and um appreciate you staying on that committee to continue to lead it because it's, it's really been beneficial.
Great.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
And um David Field, did you have anything?
I'm good. Thank you.
Deputy chief?
Uh, nobody.
All right, anyone else? All right. Excellent. That was a great presentation. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Janelle and Jenny, thank you for serving on that committee.
Yeah, it's a pleasure.
Couldn't handle it to help with mixed diseases.
Great. All right.
So I don't think Walter's gonna write.
I was gonna say, don't go too far, Walter.
Got you.
Thanks, Greg.
The next item that we have is a discussion and vote on the Blanche A and Elementary School for break builders, uh project change number thirteen. Did you wanna lead it or not?
Uh sure. So uh just for uh uh board's benefit, reminder, uh as for the republic, um when you're uh close out of Blanche A's Elementary School project, which has gone very well from a financial perspective, uh the project to this size, the number of change orders uh through the project management are pretty substantial based on the conditions on the ground and the building. Uh and some board established what was called a technical review meeting that would be once a week for the entirety of the construction project. Uh we thought and do those changes and uh make recommendations and basically bundle change order packages rather than having, you know, dozens or hundreds come into the board. And so this is uh package thirteen of that. Uh one of the things we felt was important uh in doing that was making sure that we document every time one of these comes forward. Not only what is this change order cost, what does it represent as far as contingency, how much of the contract is passed? And if you, if offer as this, how much savings still remain? And my adobe is crashing, so I can leave none of those.
Sorry, did that happen?
But ensure that uh Walter and Chris have them. So that's your open.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Chris Abano with PMA. So going through change order thirteen, a hundred percent of the contract time has elapsed. Sixty percent of the owner contingency will have been expended with the approval of change order, change order thirteen. And four point nine percent of the owner contingency is held in reserve. with the approval of change order, change order thirteen, and four point nine percent of the owner contingency is held in reserve for non-risk pending resolution. With saying that, I'll jump into the PCOs and make up this change order. The first one is one-on-one A roof screen equipment support field adjustments. This is for cutting back of steel on the roof that was penetrating through the membrane in order to keep the warranty, the thirty-year warranty, assure that there was less maintenance, and that price comes through thirty-eight hundred dollars. The next PCO on this was number one fifty-one for signage adjustments, person no comments. This is for two additional signs at the elevator machine room, that cost came out to four hundred and one dollars. The next PCO on there is one sixty-three for added A and D cabinets. There were two cabinets that were not shown on the drawings, so this was for these to be added into the building by the nurse and the principal chose those locations, and this is for the install, so that price came to twenty-four hundred. The next PCO on here is number one seventy-one, revised signage schedule and floor plans. This was for the changing of a few signs throughout the building, mainly office buildings changing the names and things as such, that came out to twelve hundred dollars. The next PCO on here is number one seventy-four A door sweeps and drip caps. This was for the install of these door sweeps and drip caps at the exterior vestibules to help with airflow throughout the building, stop airflow at exterior airflow through the building. The next PCO on here is number one seventy-nine, discovery terrace feature wall. This was for the install of additional bracing on the feature wall, which was not originally designed but was recommended by the designer. This came out to about four thousand dollars. PCO number one eighty-one, cafe two ramp graphic repairs per ASI at thirty-nine R one. This was to fix the design errors that showed misspellings on the orchid and the borderland, so this was for the reinstall, fix of the design and then the reinstall of this pattern onto above the ramp in the cafeteria. PCO one eighty-two, sorry, that came up to three thousand six hundred forty-one dollars. PCO number one eighty-two A is for concrete, additional concrete footings and asphalt for ramp extensions where existing met new and the ramps were not ADA compliant, so the rail extensions needed to be extended in order to make them ADA compliant. PCO number one eighty-seven, sorry, that was for twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. PCO one eighty-seven, self-supported blazing on cafe two ramp. This was due to a limited information on the design, which a filed sub bidder would not have been able to see in the bid. So this is for the additional inclusion of that for sixteen thousand eight hundred dollars. PCO one ninety A, patching and painting walls for paper towel dispenser reconciliation. This was an additional slip that was not included on the original submission that needed to be included for the painting of these, which was twenty-three hundred dollars. One ninety-one A, painting walls for mounted wall projector, this was also a slip that was not additionally in the first submission, but it was just one day of work for a painter painting the mounted projector where it used to be, which came up to twenty-three hundred dollars. Next PCO is number one ninety-six for the grand sign EMS, if anyone's been around the middle school, you can see it there now, but this was for the footing and the masonry around the wall. So that was originally installed and then they decided to do one that was similar to the Blanche A's Elementary School. That came up to twenty-eight thousand four hundred dollars. Next PCO on here is two oh one A cafe two projector pathway and power and pathway. This was for the painting of after the pathway was um brought to the projector, which came out to one thousand two hundred dollars. PCO two oh three A roof chain, uh roof chain brace interlocking. This was just for the, this there was, this is the difference between the quote and the actual, which came up to four hundred and thirty-three dollars. PCO two oh four, pad support steel for HVAC unit at the wastewater treatment plant. This was for the support steel and concrete to be placed for the um HVAC system at the wastewater treatment plant. This originally was at around twenty-six thousand dollars, but thanks to DVW, they were able to prep the area and take care of that cost. That was within the PCO and dropped it down to eleven thousand dollars, eight hundred, eight hundred dollars. PCO two oh five corridor millware caulking, this was for all caulking below the corridor, which was not originally designed but was recommended by the architect. This came out to six thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Two oh six is for the rock excavation phase two, this was for all the boulders to be removed from the site. This came out to eleven thousand dollars, eight hundred, eight eleven thousand eight hundred seventy-eight dollars. PCO two oh seven, paint of the BL oh six fire ray windows, this was for the windows in the gym to match the interior design, which came out to two thousand five hundred ninety-one dollars, not originally shown on the drawings. PCO two oh eight, abandoned structure in phase two, this was an abandoned structure similar to what we found in phase one, we found one in phase two. So this is cost to have it pumped, destroyed and removed from the um site. That cost came to twenty-two thousand two hundred eighty-five dollars. PCO two oh nine, RFP oh two oh six two pegboard accessories. These were accessory, accessories added to the pegboard on the ramp. These are for interactive for the kids as they go up and down the ramp to use and make use of the ramp more so. This came up to six thousand three hundred ninety-three dollars. PCO number two eleven, AI phone and central admin, this was for an additional AI phone, which allows people in and out of the building for one of the secretaries at sent at the central admin building, this came up to four thousand dollars. PCO two twelve, domestic water filter replacement. This was for a di- three additional filters for the custodians to use in case they needed to fix them more so attic stock if any problems were to arise, which came out to one thousand seven hundred twenty-five dollars. PCO two thirteen, tree removal at Beddington Street in phase two. These were trees that were removed due to the complications with the sidewalk as it came through, because they were gonna abut and eventually kill the trees, which was agreed upon by the town and abutters in that area, that it was for the better of the project and for the trees. So this came out to two thousand one hundred and forty-two dollars. PCO number two fourteen, credit to reconcile asbestos demolition unit price quantities, this was the difference that was left over uh from the unit prices, so this is the town receiving thirty-two thousand eight hundred dollars back due to this. PCO two fifteen was the filter, I mean furniture installed, the new scoreboard at the softball field, originally they were going to use the soft, the scoreboard from, that was taken down, but that was brought to the softball field at Oliver Ames, so this is for the purchase of a new scoreboard and to be installed at the new softball field at Blanche, which came out to twenty-five thousand three hundred thirty-seven dollars. PCO two sixteen, playground tractor revisions. The kids were using the tractor at the preschool playground and felt, and some of the teachers and staff felt as if it wasn't safe for them to use, so this is the cost for revisions to make this a safer environment and toy equipment, playground equipment for the kids in the playground, in the preschool playground, so this came out to two thousand three hundred seventy-two dollars. PCO two seventeen, split rail fence at walkway near C building, this was a split rail fence that is breaking up a steep slope outside of C building, which felt was necessary by the design team in order to not have teachers, students walking down the steep slope and potentially getting hurt. So that was, price was for eight thousand eight hundred ninety-four dollars. PCO two nineteen, corner TV mount installation, this was a credit we received back from the FFNE vendor. Originally, they were charging six thousand dollars, we had a different company do it for three hundred fifty-three dollars in exchange, so we got that credit back in the FFNE budget and it turned out to only be three hundred fifty-three dollars to install the TVs. PCO two twenty A, added fence at leaching field, this is for an additional fence around the leaching field, similar to the slope issue to make sure that kids weren't running down these deep slopes near the the new field that was just installed outside of Blanche, so there's gonna be an ornamental fence continuing around the field to assure safety for that. This price was thirty-six thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars. PCO two twenty-one was the window vinyl credit, this was decided by the town, town and school not to continue with, which was just a final numbering of which classroom at each window, they at the, on the exterior of each room, which they felt wasn't really necessary, so that is a credit back to the town at eighteen hundred dollars. PCO two twenty-three, kitchen washer dryer, this was for the new ventless intern, uh ventless dryer in the kitchen and uh in the kitchen area washer and dryer. And the original washer dryer was brought somewhere to Easton because this one fit better in the kitchen system for airflow and all. This was for seven thousand two hundred twenty-five dollars. PCO two twenty-four, stage wall repairs, this was for the relocation of one of the mass notification systems, so taking the system off and putting it in a new location that was better fitting, and this was for nine hundred and forty-three dollars. Those are all the PCOs, the change order thirteen.
So the total change order is two eleven, four seventy-nine, forty-six.
Correct.
Questions, comments? Is this the last time we're gonna see you?
No, um so we saw PCOs rolling in from February and March from the general contractor, they're doing a lot of cleanup. Um probably won't be as extensive as this, um I'm trying to, I can't figure out how many we have outstanding right now, but I think today we received three, just under a thousand dollars individual ones from the general contractor that we tracked, I think in January, so they're very far behind on the cleanup of their paperwork. Um if we can push them off to just one more, if we can just wait for one more, um we we could probably do that. It it'll depend on where they finish with their paperwork, um we'd like to, we'd like to just do one more, but I would I would guess too, if I had to put a number on it. Um there's really nothing significant in there, you heard a couple uh PCOs on there, specifically the scoreboard. Um that was just for the purchase of that scoreboard, so there'll be additional costs for the execution of that. Um and nothing else really significant, um.
The scoreboard was twenty-five thousand dollars.
They're incredibly expensive, yeah, that's.
I, yeah, I worked for a scoreboard company, scoreboard enterprises sold tech electronics for like six years.
That's right, yeah.
And I, they weren't that much, fifty, I know they are that much, but I thought that was installation, wow.
Uh so that is installation of the scoreboard, we need to dig down and put the footings in.
Oh, okay, alright, they did have the installation.
We need, that is the installation of the scoreboard.
That makes sense.
We need to dig, we need to dig and put the footings in, that's all. Uh nothing else that I can think of that we're carrying for large exposure, um but certainly here once and and likely twice for that.
Yeah.
Um but we are working through a substantial completion request from Bray Builders for June second, I believe, second, I'm not one of the first Fridays in June, I can't remember which one it is, um we're waiting for a couple documents from them for that. Um there should be very minimal punch lists on phase two, there is very minimal punch lists on phase one left. Um some of the discussions are occurring between the designer and the general contractor. Um so we are hoping to have everything closed out by the end of August. Um it may, some things may straggle on, but um we have our ten-month warranty walk with the commissioning agent on eight sixteen. And then as Connor mentioned, the urban cutting ceremony on Sunday, eight twenty.
Busy summer.
Yeah, awesome.
I said it's gonna be a busy summer.
Really, the only thing we have left over there that um anyone could see occurring would be the scoreboard installation, which was a change, and then the uh pavement markings on the bus loop road.
Yes, I am very, very hyped about those, I want to see them done.
Yes. Yeah, so we just, the coolest part of the project, it has to, has to be really nice.
Four twenty. Yeah.
So we were just uh negotiating a change order with them for a credit, that we wanna use a different product, um so we're getting the credit from them and as soon as we have uh response from the designer, we'll get them rolling on that. Uh they can't do it in the rain, so we need some good weather.
Well, we can't tell weather.
How about tomorrow?
My shit, but that does look like I'll be done by the urban cutting.
I am pushing.
Yeah, they said within a few weeks, they said maybe, that they should be starting.
They said within a few weeks. I've been pushing them for a date, um as soon as I have one, I'll get it over.
We'll have to do it with chalk, that's not. It's like this, I I cannot wait to see aerial images of Bray Boys pick up from the district school.
Yeah, and if anyone hasn't seen, we, there's uh Bray Builders did, um and we can grab them and send them over, they um their super did some incredible drone shots from up above, they are.
I would, we want to see.
Yeah, they're on LinkedIn, um.
If you haven't been inside, it's it's unbelievable, I mean, and you know, the playgrounds are done now, all of them, you know, open to public.
There's kids on them every day.
Yeah, it's.
There should be.
Yeah, yeah.
It's it's incredible, um it's really incredible stuff.
Yeah, I know that was a little question that was out in the the universe out here, is like, are are kids allowed to play on like after school and on the weekend?
Everyone's playing during the day?
Yeah.
Um do, if we are, if there's any work going on, they'll coordinate off, there's nothing going on in the playgrounds, but there's various caulking going on on the sidewalk, we'll coordinate that up, there's gonna be some replacement panels done on the school, the we'll coordinate that and cone it off and be, and they'll be safe with that, so there'll be a lift over there on some elevations of the building, uh and then really the projector is probably the hidden in the main cafeteria is the last real big thing that needs to go in, um they're waiting on parts, unfortunately, um the supply chain is costing them some time and then they're gonna work, they're gonna wait, uh I believe that they have the parts?
Yeah, they have it, so we until the kids drive it to summer school.
They're waiting for some of the pens before they disrupt that cafeteria.
But it's August eleventh.
Alright, great. Craig, do you wanna make a motion?
I move to approve change order number thirteen, the amount of two two hundred and eleven thousand four hundred thirty-nine dollars forty-six cents.
Second, please.
Roger and let, all in favor? Unanimous.
Excellent, thank you, thanks so much.
There's small things, yes.
I didn't even have to ask you to do it this time, it was really great, thank you.
Yeah. Here's get super cut with that uh of all thirteen and then running, that's actually.
Okay, um our, our number five is a discussion and vote for contract POL twenty twenty-three dash oh four, fifty-five portable radios from Applied Communications Services.
And I uh just wanna really quickly plan the memo with your contract, police department, planning office request, and um dawned on myself we are trying to plan and consolidate swearing-in ceremony and promotional ceremony for police and fires, you know, changes in the past twelve months. Turns out scheduling a lot of people for summer is hard, so we keep having Deputy Chief Adams in for team business and haven't actually formally introduced him, so taking responsibility for that, I apologize, Deputy, I just wanna know about, you know, the date to promote, uh Deputy Chief Adams, February, um which has been a really important part of Chief's first year. Uh Deputy Adams has been working on a lot of really important projects with the department of town, including uh not only capital planning, such as the memo, uh and acquisition of your packet that he can speak to tonight, but also uh the acquisition of will soon to be roll-out bodyboard cameras for the department, helping corrupt the policy for exiting civil service, which we have now done as of last week. Uh working on the reaccreditation of the department, uh which uh has now happened, um and has just been doing a great job, we appreciate it, so.
Thank you, sir, we, tell the partners, happy.
You're welcome. Bye, I'm Jake Seeh.
Congratulations.
Thank you, welcome. So um I can see through this contract, uh this is for fifty-five new portable radios. Uh the capital request was approved at Springtown meeting. Um our portable radios that we got now are about, I think, twelve years old. Um they worn every day, you know, eight to sixteen hours a day in the elements, on duty belts getting banged around, so they're um obviously significantly wear and tear on them. They tend to end of service life for a few years, so they're not serviced by Motorola anymore. Um we can't even get a platform, we can't even get batteries for them, at least not to Motorola, I ended up buying a knockoff one off Amazon, so um it's a critical need, um we have a contract here for fifty-five Pinewood radios. It's a newer model just came out about a year ago, so I expect it to service for a long time. Um fifty-five radios, we buy this off of all our full-time officers, our special officers all with the same model radio. Our animal control officer maybe has uh two, two or three spares. So happy to answer any questions about that.
Great, any questions from the?
Just life expectancy, I see the candidates here, what's the life expectancy they need?
I I I would expect a little ten years, like I said, there's um, this model is um almost brand new, it's only been out about a year, so.
Yeah, and they're built like it says here, that they're ready for the beating that it has.
Exactly, yes, and um these are actually, they're not gonna come dual band, 'cause that's almost double the price, but they have the ability, we could upgrade them later to have dual frequencies, which we don't need right now, but um if that became a need, we could upgrade these, so.
You're not dead, watching.
I want the green one, if I get an option.
Luckily, I had a, I did the green one as a demo and actually went back and got the normal black one, because the guys just saw the green and they're like, yeah.
Yeah, this matches the uniform.
Right, we weren't gonna buy the greens, but I still kinda, yes, people couldn't see by by the colors. Maybe for the fire department.
Alright, if there is no questions, uh it, I guess it's worth noting that um that the cost of these at one seventy-seven, nine ninety-nine point twenty-five is just below the approved capital request of one seventy-eight, one ten.
That's correct.
Craig?
I move to approve the contract POL two twenty, twenty-three dash oh four, fifty-five portable radios, total amount of one seventy-seven, hundred seventy-seven thousand nine. Total amount of one seventy seven hundred seventy seven thousand nine hundred ninety nine dollars twenty five cents. Second, land.
Roger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here tonight.
Thank you very much.
Good night. Thank you for the energy, sir. Good job.
Item DPW, item six. We have a discussion and vote for contract DPW twenty twenty three dash thirty two stormwater asset management plan with Ty and Bond. Thanks for being here, David.
Good evening. Um so this contract with Ty and Bond, uh this is part of a um SRF loan with Mass D E P to create a planning level asset management plan for our culverts. Um we're gonna be paying we're gonna be reimbursed uh eighty one thousand eight hundred twenty five dollars from D E P. Uh we are responsible for a cash match of twenty seven thousand two hundred seventy five and another twenty seven thousand two hundred seventy five dollars of income services through DPW staff. So overall, the contract with Ty and Bond, the total fee will be a hundred nine thousand one hundred dollars. I'm happy with answering questions.
Any questions?
No.
Thought it was self-explanatory. Um all right, Craig, do you wanna make a motion?
Move to approve contract DPW twenty twenty three dash thirty two. So the stormwater asset management plan, total amount a hundred nine thousand one hundred dollars.
Second, land.
Is that the the number that we're using or the twenty seven?
Yes, so I think demographic I'm wrong, but the contract needs to reflect the actual purchase value, not what you're paying cash, right? The towns or we are paying, Adam, and we re-.
We're we're paying with our.
We need.
Yeah, right.
Should be one oh nine, I believe.
Okay.
One oh nine, one hundred.
All right, that's what Craig said. You were right.
Yes.
I think that's correct.
All right, so that's Roger and Lynn. All in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Next discussion and vote contract extension DPW twenty twenty three dash zero one multiple building cleaning service M and M contract cleaning.
Yes, this is our annual um building cleaning services. We went out for bid uh last year. M and M contract cleaning was a low bidder. Uh we awarded the contract to him last year for fifty seven thousand three hundred thirty dollars. As part of that contract, we have uh options for a one year extension at on our terms. And if the contractor agrees, another one year extension for a third year. Uh so this year we have the ability to extend that contract. There's no change in contract price or terms. And we recommend that we do extend that. Um we've had uh you know pretty good luck with it. Um they've performed uh pretty well, you know, the getting contracted, there's some ups and downs, but overall they've they've done a good job. So uh we recommend extension.
Great. Any comments, questions? All right.
Move to approve contract extension DPW twenty twenty three dash oh one multiple building cleaning services with M and M Contract Cleaning Inc. The total amount fifty seven thousand three hundred thirty dollars.
Second, land.
Roger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Thanks for being here tonight.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna use your.
Great. Item eight, the annual reappointment of Constable Robert Bishop, dated July first, twenty twenty three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Thank you, Dottie. It's an application from uh Robert Bishop. He's been a constable for some time. It's uh just a reappointment effective July one through a three year term. As the case uh consisted with your policy, any uh new or applying constable has spare paperwork reviewed by the treasurer collector as well as the police department, both of which have reviewed and had no concerns or objections to the appointment. And so I I recommend that be appointment of Mr. Bishop for uh the three year term to end June thirty of two thousand twenty six, uh be able to call.
Okay, any comments, questions? All right, I'll take a motion a second and then we'll do roll call vote.
Move to reappoint Robert Bishop to the constable position July one, two thousand twenty three to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six.
Second, land.
Roger Lynn, a roll call?
Stacy Bishop.
Stevens Bishop.
Lanny Bishop.
Full Genetti Bishop?
Roger Bishop.
Sure. All right, item nine, the municipal building committee appointment, Jason Cruz um for a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Mr. Cruz um came to um he submitted his application to volunteer for a different committee uh in our last meeting. And after speaking with him a little bit more, um we thought that he would be a good fit for this and encouraged him to apply. So he did apply for this. Um we have his application form in the packet. And um I think everybody agreed that that this was a good good direction. We have a seat to fill. And if we vote tonight, he can get sworn in tomorrow and be there in time for his first meeting. So.
Sounds good.
Just value management on a hundred forty, right?
And if you're talking about uh geothermal.
So get him off to speed quickly, Jamie.
Yes.
Uh so this would be done during done via roll call with a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. So I'll take a motion a second and a roll call?
Move to appoint uh Jason Cruz to the municipal building committee appointment. The term expires June thirty of two thousand twenty six.
Second, land.
So it's Roger and Lynn.
Stacy Cruz.
Stevens Cruz.
Lanny Cruz.
Full Genetti Cruz.
Roger Cruz.
Excellent. Item ten, historical commission appointment, Ed Hands, his uh term expiration June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. Um Ed has applied to be on the historic commission. And uh that would be with a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
I move to appoint Ed Hands to the historic commission with a term expired June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six.
Second, land.
That's Roger and Lynn.
Daddy, just cuz I know he's watching. I saw him this morning and told him I would discuss the pros and cons of him. Whether or not he's.
Don't we don't have time for that, Jamie?
His value, his value of the talent.
It's awkward.
I just know he's watching.
Stacy Hands.
Stevens Hands.
Lanny Hands.
Full Genetti Hands.
Roger Hands.
And thank you, Ed. He uh continues to serve on various boards and committees for many, many years now. So we appreciate his um exceptional volunteerism. The next one is item eleven for the Eastern Cultural Council appointment, uh Suzanne Bump with a term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty six. There was an open seat on there. Um and Suzanne has agreed to fill that seat. Um that's an an interesting committee. You can't be on that committee for more than five years. You have to leave the committee for a year and go back. It's been a real challenge because you have the chair of that committee knows all the rules of mass cultural and how everything works. And then they have to leave. So uh that seat opened up. So I wanna thank um Beth Gaylor who served in that role. She has offered to uh help Suzanne here to speak too, which was very nice of her.
She has done a very good job.
Great.
Yeah, she has done a really good job. So.
Yep, yep.
Move to appoint Suzanne Bump to the Eastern Cultural Council with a term expiration of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty six.
Second, land.
Roger and Lynn?
Stacy Bump.
Stevens Bump.
Lanny Bump.
Full Genetti Bump?
Roger Bump.
Excellent. And now we have an acceptance of resignation also from Ed Hands for the Tricentennial Committee, the term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty twenty four. Uh we do have a memo um in our packet that Ed is resigning from the Tricentennial Committee and leaving that open seat for somebody else that's willing to serve. So we thank him for his service on that committee. And we'll need a a motion a second and a roll call vote to accept the resignation.
Move to accept the resignation of Ed Hands from the Tricentennial Committee, the term expiration of June thirty of two thousand twenty six.
Second, land.
Roger Lynn?
Stacy Hands.
Stevens Hands, Lanny Hands.
Full Genetti Hands?
Roger Hands.
Excellent. Item thirteen, a vote um to accept a donation to the Eastern Fire Department from the Lions Club of Eastern. Uh the Lions Club of Eastern has generously donated one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to support the Eastern Fire Department's annual open house. Uh we do have a memo from Chief Alexander to the select board requesting consideration of the gift. If approved, the funds will be deposited into the fire department gift account. Um this is really very generous of the Eastern Lions. Um you know, they they uh fundraise all year and invest a lot back into the community. So um we wanna send our appreciation to the Lions Club for this gift. So uh if you wanna make a motion to accept?
I move to accept the generous donation from the Lions Club of Eastern to the Eastern Fire Department, the amount of one hundred fifty dollars.
Second, land.
It's Roger and Lynn. This is just a regular vote, right? Not roll call?
I'm sorry. Uh it's a real vote.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
So all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you. So now we are at the bottom of the agenda here. Um acceptance of the minutes dated June twenty sixth, twenty twenty three?
So I move Roger.
Second, land.
Roger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Town administrator notes.
I'm sure I just want to uh recognize and uh thank this fire departments for uh because I'm sure most people seem to have had a pretty incredible rescue on Portland last week. Uh as a person who have been missing for quite some time, uh more often than not, I also like to see those uh searches do not end up with a person being found safely and and brought home. And so uh really appreciate their work, working with Samarack, locating that. Uh first, thanks to Snickers and uh um just appreciate the effort by the first responders.
And the police got there first and and charge tried in to help. So uh the collaboration between the police, fire is really incredible. Awesome. Thank you, Connor. Anyone else?
Yeah.
I have nothing personal.
Jamie?
Just uh plug again the meeting tomorrow night here in this room for the municipal buildings committee as we dive into a little bit more of the minutia and and can get just very important details of the project of municipal buildings.
Roll call is ready.
Craig?
I just seconded what Jamie said. It's credible, but uh I think there were uh people in the community.
So I'll just remind everybody that this Wednesday um up in front of Oak Sam's Hall, if you enjoyed our summer concert series last year, you're really gonna love it this year. So uh starting at seven o'clock, we have Greg Fernandez and the Rose Conservatory Scholars. These are young people that um go to the Rose Music Conservatory in Brockton. They're incredible. They're gonna be coming and singing. Some of their songs are gonna have sign language. Um and they were gonna be doing um drumming instrumentals and there'll be some audience participation. So that's gonna be really fun. That'll be right from six to about six thirty. And then Tommy Raines and his guests. Uh Tommy was a huge hit last year. He's got a great following. He is gonna uh kick he's gonna pick it up after that introduction. Um there's gonna be pizza ice cream for purchase. Uh Shovel Town Brewery is gonna be there with beverages for purchase. And it's really a fun night. Uh we drew a really great crowd last year. I don't think it's gonna be really nice on Wednesday as well. So I hope to see people there and bring the kids. It's a family family friendly event. So um with that, I would take a motion to withdraw.
So I move Roger.
Second, land.
Roger and Lynn, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Thank you. And thank you, E Cap, for broadcasting tonight.